... meeting Tuesday, August 4th, 2009. Flag salute this morning is going to be led by Supervisor Wegant.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Robert. Ann, would you please read the meeting procedures?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting Tuesday, August 4th, 2009. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cell phones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Now's the time for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board about any items that are not on the agenda may do so. Please come to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Good morning. I'm Melanie Barton. I'm your Placer County Museums Administrator. And I'm here this morning to invite you all to be a trail traveler and participate in the Heritage Trail, which is our local history museum event this weekend, August 8th and 9th. And I know Jennifer, for one, has signed up to go on a van tour. But I hope all of you will come out and visit at least the museums in your district. And Greg has a wonderful 60-second video that I know you've seen, but our audience probably hasn't seen, so I'd like to show it once more.
For hands-on family fun, come travel Placer County's Heritage Trail on August 8th and 9th with 18 free museum stops from Lake Tahoe to Roseville. There'll be lots of fun activities for you and your family to enjoy, like sack races, ice cream making, and gold panning. And admission to all museums is free. For a day of fun, come travel Placer County's Heritage Trail. That's Saturday and Sunday, August 8th and 9th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. each day. For more information, call us at (530) 889-6500, or visit us online at theheritagetrail.blogspot.com. That's Placer County's Heritage Trail. It's fun, it's local, and it's free.
Look like fun?
Looks nice. Do they put real gold in that ceiling pan?
Yes, actually, they do. In fact, I really thought I would send you guys a memo saying that's how we're going to increase our budget this year. Every Friday, we should go down to the river and pan for gold.
I have to say, don't count on me. I tried that last year, and I got no gold at all.
Well, you probably need a better teacher. So, I'd be glad to do that. But yeah, you will find gold, and it's a wonderful opportunity to showcase Placer County. We're getting some amazing publicity this year. Anita and I have turned out to be a pretty good team on this. We have some great sponsors, Capital Public Radio, and Sure West, and of course, County of Placer. So, thank you very much to all of you for your support, and I hope to see you Saturday and Sunday. I'll leave some trail guides outside, and people can pick them up so they can get started first thing in the morning. Thank you.
Did a nice job in that video. That's nice.
Anita and Greg did that.
Well, Anita, you did a great job. Where are you? Oh, there she is. All right, any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, Jim Durfee with Facility Services. I have a guest here today who comes bearing gifts. Dave Hinshaw from PG&E is here today to present us ceremoniously with a check. We've actually already cashed the check, but Dave's here to announce a rebate check that we partnered with PG&E on a project actually here at this facility. So, Dave?
Good morning. I'm Dave Hinshaw, PG&E's account manager for Placer County. Thank you, Mr. Durfee. And as Mr. Durfee mentioned, I'm here to present today a county check for $19,000 for some energy efficiency work done here at this building and the building next door. This was some work on a new energy-efficient boiler and some controls for the air conditioning units. And this incentive is part of our energy efficiency programs that the county, as you're well aware, has participated in before. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Durfee and his staff, Mr. Swift, and a special thanks to Steve Hecker for all his work and coordination throughout these projects. In addition to the check, I'm very pleased to present the county with plaque and energy efficiency award, not only for this project, but the work you've done over the years with your solar and other energy-efficient rebates, and the work that you're going to be doing, too. So, on behalf of PG&E, I'm very pleased to present this in the check. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Jensen's here, too. He's with PG&E.
And I wanted to thank the board for this as well. Without the support of the board on all of these projects, we wouldn't be achieving these. And I think it's a real testimony to the county over the years, working pretty hard to really try to curb our energy usage and make our buildings as efficient as they can be. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rosemary Freeborn. I'm a humane officer with Friends of Placer County Animal Shelter. I'm here today to provide you with our August rent payment. I'd also like to give some background information for our viewing audience. In 2005, we began a campaign to improve the conditions at the Placer County Animal Shelter. In 2007, we received an endorsement from the court as a society for the prevention of cruelty to animals, and me as a humane officer. Shortly after that, the county began to retaliate against us, and one of those forms of retaliation came as levying a rent payment on our animal shelter at the DeWitt Center. That facility has saved 4,200 animals that would have otherwise been destroyed at your animal shelter. And we have also provided over $100,000 in improvements to the county shelter, including a $50,000 spay-neuter trailer that is out there today. I'd also like to point out that you now have a copy of your own rent policy that allows for zero rent to nonprofits, and a list of nonprofits that receive zero rent. So, I believe that Friends has been discriminated against. I believe that this has been retaliation, and I believe that we've been harmed. And I want to know what you're going to do to rectify that situation, and I'd like to know in the next 30 days. I also have to deliver Public Records Request Act for documentation from your office, as well as the county executive's office. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I've closed public comment. Move to Supervisor Committee reports. Start over my left with...
I have your report.
Girk?
This afternoon, Supervisor Wegant and I will have yet another PCCP ad hoc committee meeting. Without giving too much away, I think we've made good progress in the last month or so working with the City of Lincoln on trying to get us to a map that works for everybody. And hopefully today, we'll see some really good progress moving that forward. Appreciate Robert's time well above and beyond our time in committee. We spend hours in committee every month, and Robert, I know, works it even more than that. And so, the board just needs to be aware of the amount of time that Robert is spending on this particular effort. It's been close to him for a number of years, and it certainly shows. As we're getting close to the finish line, hopefully, it certainly shows. And then, closely related, but not directly, is there still remains hope that we will achieve our LEDPA determination on Alternative 5 for the Parkway. Sparta staff, South Placer Regional Transportation Authority staff continues to work with the agencies. And I think as the agencies are seeing good focused progress on the PCCP, it's helping them as well. So, these things are kind of dovetailing nicely. Also, just quickly, on the Bonsair Job Training Agency, they have deployed almost threefold the number of summer youth work programs that they have historically done, and have had great success. Some of it we've seen in the press have had great success getting some of these summer youth programs out there on the street and getting youth off of the street and employed during the summer. So, just kudos to Jason Buckingham and his staff. As the federal government decided as recently as April/May that this was going to be a big focus of the recovery effort, his staff did a phenomenal job of mobilizing to get these programs out there. That's all.
Thank you. Robert, you good? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And I've been asked by Supervisor Montgomery to remove items 15B and D, correct, Jennifer?
Yes, that's correct. As I did in Tahoe, I'd like to remove these items relating to proposed merit increases off the consent agenda onto the main agenda so that they are open for both public discussion and discussion here at the board level. As I indicated in Tahoe, I believe we need to start placing these on the main agenda and not consents, but I will continue asking to have them removed from consents until that occurs. Thank you.
All right. Any other items?
With those changes, move through with consent.
Second.
Let's see, do we need a roll call on that? Yes, roll call.
Euler, Wegant, Holmes, Montgomery, Rockholm.
Yes. Now, we'll discuss item 15B.
If, with the board's permission, could I do an introduction on both B and D at the same time?
Yes.
Both of these are a request for approval of a 5% merit increase. One is for Richard Connect, Client Services Program, Director of Health and Human Services, Children's System of Care. And the other one is for Janet Fogarty, Managing Account Auditor. And both of these have 5% recommended, and the hours are so stated in your agenda. Just again, a little bit of background on these. The concern about merit increases, I think, had been, came up a subject of a newspaper article. I think clearly not quite framed in the right question of what these are about. These are merit increases that employees who are still on the step system after initially hired have to receive an approval in terms of meeting the qualifications or exceeding those of their progressing and doing their work. As it was characterized in the news, that these are only management or executive pay, I think is what it was described. The only reason why they're on your agenda, as it's required under the county's process that your board approved merit increases for management-level positions. There's over 760 PPEO and DSA step increases or merit increases that are granted on an annual basis, pretty much to that number, at least that number this last year, that are not brought forward under the public process. Those are handled internally to departments. All of these merit increases have been budgeted for, notwithstanding MTO days, et cetera, whether they're in management, DSA, or PPO, and taken into account in the regular budgeting process. There's more information on these particular two ones. I'd be happy to try and answer those.
Jennifer?
Yeah, and I'd also just like to make clear that, you know, I'm not trying to pick on anyone here or single anyone out. I just think it's very important that we not address the merit increase question piecemeal, but we address it at a larger policy level, so we're not addressing individuals. So, having said that, I am going to vote to approve these increases today because I don't think it's right to focus on individual positions. That is not our role on the Board of Supervisors. Our role is to consider policy implications of what we do and don't do. So, I would welcome a policy discussion on this at some point in the future.
Robert?
In that vein, in an effort, I think, to provide the public clarity as a result of what I consider to be lack thereof in the reporting about it, as Tom just mentioned, Jerry, the legal question is, the reason why we don't approve the merit increases for the other employees is because those are a part of the negotiated contracts we have with that group, those groups, correct?
Well, the board has adopted similar classifications for individuals who are represented by the union in the classified service and individuals who are represented, who are in an unrepresented unit management. We have the same classification formulas, and the classification formulas call for this discretionary decision every year while they're on the salary schedule. And the difference is, the classified employees represented by the union go to the Civil Service Commission for the approval of those merit increases, whereas the management people who are covered by the same classification system come to the board instead. And both of those provisions are set out in the ordinances.
And again, to help clarify for the benefit of the public who actually do deserve the right to accurate information, all of that information is public information, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Girk?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, Jim?
Well, I just wanted to point out that these two employees also participate in the furloughs. I just needed to point that out.
Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this item? Can we take both of these together, or do we have to do them separate? You want to make the motion?
Move to approve items 15B and D.
Second.
Roll call?
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wegant?
Yes.
Holmes, Euler, Rockholm.
Yes. Okay, let's move to department items, I guess, number five.
I think Jerry would like to ask.
We'll go in closed session, you know?
All right, we will adjourn to closed session. And the board will adjourn to closed session to discuss the item 8B from the Agenda Conference with Labor Negotiators.
Yeah, I'm hoping so.
The Board has returned from closed session where they had...
Just a minute, come count them down. Jerry.
(laughing).
Number three, one, two. You're live.
The Board has returned from closed session where they heard a report from their labor negotiators as set out in the Agenda 8B.
Item number five. Mr. Labou.
Jim Labou, Redevelopment Agency. Item number five is regarding a authorization to submit a grant application for a housing project in Kings Beach. For the past two years, the Redevelopment Agency has been working with DOMA's Development LLC to pursue a scattered sites affordable rental housing development project in Kings Beach. The Redevelopment Agency Board has previously approved acquiring four development sites in Kings Beach and entering into a series of agreements with DOMA's Development for this project. They include an exclusive negotiating rights agreement, pre-development loan agreement, option agreements, and a property management agreement. In recent weeks, the project has made significant progress and received strong support from NITREC, the North Tahoe Site Design Review Committee, and the TRPA Governing Board. Two of the five sites on Brook Avenue and Deer Street now have their entitlements fully approved, and the others are also making good progress. We are anticipating construction to begin next summer, 2010, but additional financing will be needed. The item before you is to approve the submittal of a $2.1 million application to the state for home grant funds. These funds will supplement agency contributions, a previously approved infill infrastructure grant of approximately $3.3 million, and anticipated affordable housing tax credits to be applied for in 2010. The grant application is specific to one of the sites on Deer Street, but the entire five-site project is planned to move forward together in either one or two phases of construction. I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions on this item? I'll entertain a motion.
Ms. Barbara Pivel.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Good presentation. Item number six. Mr. Bell. Mr. Bell and his team.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
Do we get the good news first or the bad news?
(laughing).
We're the good news team. It's the good news.
Good morning, Mr. Chair members. I'm Jeff Bell with the County Executive Office. I'm joined this morning by Linda Oakman and also by Becky Rigan and Allison Carlos. And we're here really to give you an update, but also to really provide a bit of a roadmap for talking about the county budget for the next month or so today, to provide you with an update on the county budget and some of the actions that have occurred at the state level, but also in the next couple of weeks, in fact, on August 18th and 19th, to provide you with a much more detailed budget workshops, which will be on the 18th and 19th in these chambers. And then, on September 8th, the final budget public hearing. And then after that, the final budget vote on September 22nd. So really, kind of a roadmap for you today. Today, an update on what happened last week with the state budget being signed, the associated vetoes on the 18th and 19th in a couple of weeks, the budget workshops, final budget hearing on September 8th, and then final budget vote September 22nd. If I could turn for a second, Mr. Chair, to the presentation we're about to do with you. Of course, today we have a couple memos. There's the budget update memo, and then there's a companion memo that comes with that. And it really asks for guidance as we go into the final budget adjustments. And what we'd like to ask is if it's okay with you, we'd like to kind of seamlessly, after going through that first memo, seamlessly transition into the guidance for that second memo, after, of course, pausing for questions on that first memo. So with your permission, we'd like to do that, if we could. Okay? So, turning now to the material in that first memo. We are truly in unprecedented times. The number of times we've come before you, the actions we've asked over the past several years, the severity of the actions that have been asked of your board, the number of times we've come to see you about the budget. The proposed budget that was, we were just here to see you about in May, was a $769 million operating budget. It was 11.1% smaller than the budget from just '08-'09. It reduced the general fund by $13.3 million. It will, by the end of the year, fund 100 fewer positions than the previous budget, and 200 fewer than the '08-'09, I'm sorry, the '07-'08 budget. Now, as was largely anticipated by your board, as we head into the final budget, we are looking at additional declines in revenue at the local level. What do I mean by that? Well, we're anticipating additional drops in our property tax revenues, to the tune of probably about another $1.2 million. Additional communications with our assessor, we're continuing to contact them, taking a look at what we think's going to happen in our real estate, has us pause, take a look at what we think's going to come in 2009-10, has us look at those revenues, bring them down, supplemental property tax, another $1.5 million, public safety sales tax, $3.4 million, sales tax itself, $328,000, and realignment revenue, another $1.4 million. All told, about $8.5 million. Turning to the state, we all saw last week, the state budget, $26 billion. The governor signs, the budget signs an additional round of vetoes. And if I could just pause for a minute, prior to coming to Plaster County, I worked down in the Dome for about nine years. I worked at the Department of Finance for five years, worked at the State Senate for four, and I've never seen anything like what I saw this year. The circus that it was in the conference committee, the mess that came out, and the hit that we're taking at the local level. I've never seen anything like it. Well, for us here at Plaster County, it looks like it's probably going to be about a $17.5 million adjustment. Really, two major components for that. The biggest component will be from Proposition 1A. $11.1 million of that for the general fund. Library fund, an additional $300,000 from Prop 1A. That's off of about a $3.8 million base. The fire fund, an additional $100,000 hit. That's off about a $1.2 million. The second component is about a $5.5, I'm sorry, a $5 to $6 million hit. Now, that $5 to $6 million has a lot of detail associated with it. And to give you a little more detail for that is Becky Rigan. Becky?
Going to pass it off to her to give us the real bad news.
Yeah. Thanks, Jeff. Good morning. Statewide Health and Human Services expenditures account for roughly a third of state general fund outlays, and they fall second after education for total state general fund expenditures. When the governor's revised budget package closed the $25 billion shortfall, it contained $3 billion in state general fund savings from reductions in state health and human service programs. When associated federal reductions are factored in, the net funding reduction to state HHS programs is nearly $5.5 billion. And although we are still awaiting the specific details from the state agencies, this translates to a proposed state budget impact of $5 to $6 million to Plaster County's Health and Human Services Department. In addition to state budget cuts, separate dedicated revenue sources from sales tax and vehicle licensing fees, known as realignment revenue, is anticipated to drop an additional $1.4 million. Together, these revenue reductions result in a total HHS funding shortfall from the proposed budget of $7.4 million. If we were to factor in the revenue reductions already calculated in the proposed budget, the total year-over-year funding shortfall for HHS increases to approximately $9 million. At a time when the county is experiencing a doubling in unemployment rates, and 10,000 new families each year are seeking county assistance in finding new jobs, this funding shortfall further exacerbates the ongoing inadequacy of state and federal funds available to pay for the services that we are mandated to provide. As I mentioned, we are still awaiting further detail on many of the state cuts, but at this time, it appears as if the most significant impacts will occur in the following programs. Cuts to CalWorks, a program sometimes referred to as welfare to work, target the program recipients and the counties who provide the services. Recipients will incur reductions in eligibility criteria for employment assistance, childcare, and direct aid payments, and counties will incur a 25% reduction in funding in each of the next two years. These changes will result in a loss of service to 1,100 residents, including 775 children and 325 adults. In Medi-Cal and healthy families, many of the impacts are still to be clarified. For Medi-Cal, it appears that up to 3,500 women may lose access to women's health services, and over 9,000 county residents will experience delays in eligibility determination. The Healthy Families Program provides low-cost health insurance for children from infancy to age 18 for low-income working families, and it is anticipated that 4,700 currently enrolled children will be at risk of losing their health insurance, and children who are currently eligible but not yet enrolled will be placed on waiting lists and have no access to medical coverage. For Child Welfare Services, they would see a loss of nearly $1 million of funding that in past years has been available for investigations of reported or suspected child abuse or neglect, and for other supportive services to children in the foster care system. We would anticipate increased social workload, social worker caseloads of up to 50% for 560 foster children and families in the county, in addition to reduced services for 40 transitioning foster youth. In Home Supportive Services, provides care to children, adults, or the elderly who may require in-home support to allow them to stay out of long-term care. And we anticipate eliminating services to 265 of those recipients and reducing services to an additional 227 recipients, along with a significant expansion of management and oversight responsibilities for county staff, to include fingerprinting of all care providers and care recipients. The state budget also eliminates $1 million or 20% of the county's total resources for providing substance abuse treatment, which has been repeatedly demonstrated to prevent further incidents of domestic violence, child abuse, driving under the influence, and other criminal offenses. In light of these impacts, which we have generally been anticipating since the release of the governor's May revise, HHS has worked with our office to interpret the impact of the state funding cuts and to once again creatively redesign their service delivery model and reduce services to operate within available funding. We will continue to work with the department to quantify the impact of the funding reductions, and we'll have more complete information for you at the upcoming board workshops. So unless there's any questions, I'd like to move on to describing the funding impacts for public safety.
Comment, I guess. My recollection at least, it seems like this is the first, before we've worked hard, I think, to backfill our deficiencies driven exclusively by the state's inability to realistically deal with their budget over the last five years, in my opinion. But we've backfilled as best as we could from our own resources to try to keep the system as whole as possible, noting that we have a unique and innovative approach to HHS services in Plaster County. And to my recollection, this is the first time we've actually cut people out of the system before we may have experienced lower levels of service, but with people at least having access, but perhaps that there were delays in the access as compared to. Is that accurate?
Generally, yes. We like to refer to the fact that the state has not provided cost of doing business increases to the county since 2001, and for Plaster County, that has amounted to about $5 million in costs, year-over-year costs, for providing the same service level that are not funded. So, since that time, the department has been scaling back their services with that kind of impact since that time. And this is the first year of this level of significance to funding to the base service level.
So I guess with that, you know, obviously not good news for those of us here, or anyone in Plaster County, but knowing that, I guess I'd like just ongoing feedback as to what we're seeing as we try to deliver those services. And Doc Burden and his group could keep us apprised. And Doc Burton and his group could keep us apprised as to what that actually means in terms of personal lives for people here in Placer County. Obviously, we're probably not going to like hearing what we hear, but I think it's important that we hear it.
Okay. So, moving on to the impact for public safety. And although public safety was originally targeted for some state reductions, the current budget package completely eliminated those initial proposals that directly impacted county funding. However, funding for the sheriff's and district attorney's offices and for the probation department will be significantly impacted by further decline in public safety sales tax revenue. Current projections suggest an additional reduction of $3.4 million to each of, to collectively to their departments, and that translates to roughly $2.6 million for the sheriff's department, and $429,000 each for the district attorney and probation departments. State funding cuts to the judicial brands are, branch are anticipated to result in reduced funding for the Superior Court to the sheriff's office for the court securities contract, and that amount is anticipated to be about $400,000. The state budget proposal assumes savings of approximately $1.2 billion in unallocated savings from the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, which the governor proposes to accomplish by reducing the state's responsibility for 27,300 inmates and offenders through a variety of means, such as expanding alternative custody options for lower-risk offenders, reducing parole supervision caseloads, what's being referred to as parole realignment, commuting the sentences of undocumented immigrants being held in state prisons and releasing them to federal authorities for deportation, and adjusting the thresholds of property crimes so that low-level felonies could be categorized as misdemeanors, making offenders eligible to serve their time in local jails and alternative sentencing, and expanding positive behavior rehabilitation credits that are available for reducing prison sentences. And as I said, there are no direct funding impacts to the county from, from the state budget. However, an indirect impact to local public safety is certainly anticipated in the areas of prosecution, detention, and supervision of these offenders as they return to local jurisdictions. And it should be noted that the trial courts were directly funded by the state and are scheduling one-day-per-month furloughs and other approaches to operating within their funding reductions from the state. This action will also have an operational impact to our departments as they work with the reduced availability of the courts. The members of the county's Criminal Justice Policy Committee have agreed to meet and collectively discuss these impacts and identify viable solutions. And again, we are working with these departments to quantify the impact of the trailing public safety sales tax revenues, and we anticipate discussing them with you in greater detail at the workshops. Any questions?
Yeah, one quick one on the, on the impact of the courts. That reduction, I'm hearing them talk about possibility of court closures on Wednesdays, things along those lines. Would you explain the nexus between that reduction of the courts and what has been publicized lately regarding the peer court program?
The impact of that furlough day, the Wednesday, one Wednesday per month, will have an impact of, of just having reduced access to the courts to process these cases through. So as our prosecutors and defenders have the responsibility of moving these, these cases through in a timely manner, they will have that reduction to deal with.
Well, and it's, and should we point out, it's also the civil side as well. I mean, it's not just criminal prosecutions, it's all, all civil cases that get impacted through that calendar as well. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And that the peer court program is something that's been in place in Placer County for a number of years, that has a relatively minor impact on the actual court cases that go forward to the Superior Court. It is a program that has been responsible for getting kids back into school and increasing the ADA that schools are able to draw down for their funding levels, but it has a relatively minor impact to the Placer County criminal justice system. And although many were in support of trying to, can keep that program in place with the level of impacts that we're looking at across the county, that was something that just neither our, neither the Placer County nor the Superior Courts were able to continue funding at this time.
And what was the Superior Court's contribution in terms of total operating costs of the program? What was Superior Court's contribution versus our contribution?
I don't think I have that with me. I can...
I think it was, I think it was $200,000.
Yeah.
$200,000 from the Superior Court, and then I think probation is $80,000, and then, I don't know how much our, our cost, do you know, Rich?
The court had a shortfall, they have a $3.5 million shortfall off a, they had a $23 million budget, they had to cut it to $20 million. So the judges went through all of their programs and were allocating about between $180,000 and $200,000, including security to the court, for the peer court. They were unable to continue that contribution in order to maintain core business functions. They're in the process of laying off up to 40 employees, so very financially challenged. So that's what happened. What we did in our budget, we retained some of the money. Should the court have been able to change its decision, they went back, they looked again, the judges came back as a group and said they would not be able to support it this year.
Thank you. And for our $80,000 that's in probation, just to tag on to that, again, as we move forward with our budget workshops with a $17 million shortfall to address, I think we're going to have to look at all different sources of funding for all programs that we already have in dire need of funding.
Okay. There are no further questions from me, I'll turn the presentation over to Allison Carlos.
Thank you, Becky. Good morning. I'm going to briefly update you on transportation and transit issues. Thankfully, in 11th hour decision by the Assembly, the state spared local jurisdictions from a devastating blow to road maintenance programs by virtue of not taking the highway user transportation account funding, commonly known as HUTA.
Can we put in for cash for clunkers?
Yeah. So, there goes the good news. Of course, we don't know any future actions by the state, even relative to this particular issue, but for now, in the 9-10 budget, we do continue to have $7 million of HUTA funding available for road maintenance services. That would be 43% of the road maintenance budget. While we now fully expect all of that HUTA funding, what the state did proceed to do was defer half of that, $3.5 million, and half of the Prop 42 funding, Proposition 42, which is our Maintenance of Effort for Road Maintenance funding, to the tune of $1.9 million, to where we don't expect to receive those two pots of money until early 2010. These deferrals will require diligent planning and, of services and projects, as well as our available funding resources in order to ensure that our cash flow sustains us through 9-10. Our Public Works Director, Ken Grimm, and his staff are actively working to update the work plan for 9-10, to ensure that projects move forward and services are delivered in the current levels, and will, will be completing that so that we can ensure to maintain programs. Part of maintaining funding for road maintenance is a substantial general fund contribution for the MOE, the Maintenance of Effort program. That's $3.7 million that has typically been provided annually out of our general fund as leverage funding for Prop 42. The proposed HUTA take really did grab all the headlines for a number of weeks, and that was a real concern. However, a lingering and more subtle potential adverse impact to road maintenance funding would be if we were to lose the Prop 42 funding due to the strain on the general fund from the effects of the state's raid of the property tax as suspension of Prop 1A. As the table and the staff report reflects, the HUTA was 43% of the funding for road maintenance activity, but actually Prop 42 is 46% of funding, additional funding for that same budget. If the county were not able to match its obligation, we would stand to lose $7.4 million of combined MOE funding. This is one case in point of the breadth of potential service impacts to the county and that we could experience because of suspension of Prop 1A. As Jeff mentioned when he opened the comments, the state's action through the taking of our general purpose revenue with suspension of 1A does diminish our ability to have that funding for other priorities. Transportation and road programs and services are experiencing funding declines, and while stimulus package dollars are helpful, ongoing funding streams are reducing. Projections for gas tax are lowered this year, and due to the growing demands on the, as well as other funding streams, as well as due to the growing demands on the general fund, I would like to point out there are general fund contribution to your overlay program was eliminated in '08-'09 and is not contained in the 9-10 budget either. While Public Works has stretched resources and reduced some services in a manner to minimize impacts, road services are necessarily ratcheting down. Any further loss of funding by not securing Prop 42 is anticipated to have substantial harm to service delivery. This is one of the many challenges staff looks forward to further discussing with you in budget workshop to make sure the strategies are maximizing use of all available resources to live, to deliver core services. So I'm going to leave road maintenance for a minute and just give you a quick update on transit services. As you know, demand for transit services has increased in the county. Certainly over the last three years, this demand continues to grow. Over three years, we've almost, almost doubled our commuter express service in western Placer County, and route services in Tahoe area have increased by about 25%. At the same time this growth has been occurring, there is a decline in supporting revenues primarily for sale, as sales tax-related revenues as local transportation funds, LTF. Our LTF has declined somewhere between $1 and $2 million over that same three-year period of time, which is about 30%. While Public Works staff has taken steps to maximize use of the available funding, the reality is that overall revenues are shrinking with services growth. The eastern county area serviced by the Tahoe area Regional Transit, TART, is more challenged by this dynamic. This area is adversely affected by overall sales tax and other revenue declines, but also access to federal operating assistance is very limited due to the more rural population designation as compared with western area. Funding for even-based service is challenged, while in this area, demand for special services for visitors and resorts increases. Staff continues to work with the department, to Public Works, to assess opportunities to address these concerns over time, and look forward for future discussions with your board. And with that, I'm going to conclude my comments, and if there is no question, I'll pass the microphone back to Jeff to conclude the staff report.
Jennifer.
I do actually have a couple of questions, I'm sorry. Representing the east end of the county and just the astonishing amount of roads that we have up there, I'm particularly concerned that we may indeed end up losing some or all of that HUTA funding. I've had conversations with both Kristen Spears and Janine Windushausen, who have both told me that they are very concerned that the state is still overestimating fairly dramatically the amount of revenue that is going to be coming in, and that in a very short time, we're going to be facing yet another budget shortfall at the state level. And, and my concern, obviously, because snow removal is so crucial to the east end of the county, are these HUTA funds, is it, is it your feeling, I know I'm asking you to look into the crystal ball here, but is it your feeling that when the state comes back to us with those budget shortfalls again, it's going to be the HUTA funds they're looking at?
We think that the HUTA funds are, are going to be back on the table. Like, as you say, there is no crystal ball. I, we do believe that the state's not done, and because HUTA came within 60 minutes of being gone, I would only expect that that's going to be a strategic point of, of interest to them.
Okay, well then, I will continue doing as I have done and bending the air of every state legislator I can reach and every aide and every family member, and just trying to make it clear how important those funds are, not just to the eastern end of the county, but the county as a whole. On, on the question of transit, you mentioned the challenges, again, facing TART because of their rural designation. I know at one point, we at the county had sort of partnered with the TRPA in asking for, it's sort of a change to our federal transportation designation. Where are we in that process?
That's been in our legislative platform for some time. What we're hoping is that if we get that designation change in concert with TRPA to fix, affects everybody around the lake, it doesn't necessarily increase the funds for everybody who goes after those, but we get a little, redistributes those, and I think that's the dilemma, is that there's no new funding created by that designation, but we pull a few cents out of everybody else's pot throughout the state to get a little bit more money for Lake Tahoe. But that's been the challenge, is getting any change on that.
Thank you. Depressing, but excellent presentation.
I was thinking we could probably get you a snowplow.
I have, I own three snowplowers, so...
Before Jeff goes to his conclusion, if I might...
Jim had a comment.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
I just wanted to let you know that the Regional Council of Rural Counties is very concerned about the HUTA funding, particularly some of the less populated counties. This is their complete Public Works funding, and if they lose that, they're going to have to close up their Public Works Department. And speaking of Public Works, I want to personally extend a great deal of gratitude to our road, road department. They've done a great job this last year. I see Bob Blazer out there and Will Gardner really have been doing the overlays, trimming, making sure their site distance is clear, and I just want to acknowledge them for the tremendous job they've been doing.
Thank you. Tom?
The point, the fine point I wanted to put on, on the issue there is that, as I think you heard from the presentation here, is that we're seeing the state literally steal quite a bit of general fund revenue. And in the past, when you look at the county's budgets, I kind of look at them in groups and visualize that there's five buckets out there. There's Health and Human Services that needs a certain amount of money to keep running, that's like a big bucket of water, that they get a lot of state money for that. We have Public Safety that gets a lot of public safety sales tax to kind of fill that bucket. We have the road fund that gets a lot of gas tax and other propositions to fill that. And then we have the general fund that's somewhat, general fund departments that are somewhat offset by licenses, permit fees, those type of things, that kind of offset that. Well, when the, when the state raids all coffers, essentially what they do, they diminish the liquidity in each one of these buckets. Well, the only bucket it's going to fill, those individual Public Safety, road fund, Health and Human Services, is the general fund. And what you're, I think, as Supervisor Wiegand pointed out, is the board has, has very judiciously augmented especially Health and Human Services and Public Safety, as we've seen any kind of declines, to keep the level of service up. Well, when they've, the state's taken a lot of money out of that general fund bucket, we don't have money to pour in those other four buckets, and that's really going to be our challenge as we go to this next workshop, is sustaining all those levels. Each one of those, whether it's transportation, Health and Human Services, which by the way has been diminishing since last May and has been pulling down and consolidating services and doing a yeoman's job, and can't make sure Doc Burton gets appreciative for that. So you don't have the money in the general fund to replenish the amounts that are diminishing. And it's, you know, it's like the, the match on the Prop 42. Not a, well, it is a large sum of money, $3.7 million, but that really is a match to a lot more money while trying to sustain the general fund match to that, recognizing it matches that. Public Safety has similar stories, so does Health and Human Services. That is going to be our huge challenge this next year, because they literally drained our big bucket that we sustain everything else with in terms of matches and keeping that operating platform forward. So it, you know, works for me in terms of a visual age, but that's really where you're going to have to focus a lot in your budget workshops. But quite frankly, through your leadership, your board has set the county, this county in much better shape than other counties. We've gone through two or three other challenges over this last year in terms of shortfalls, made corrective action. I'm confident that we'll get there, and you'll still provide meaningful services to the citizenry in our county. You've been able to pull the, the rabbit out of the hat three times. The fourth time, you'll be able to do that, and I'm sure at the end of the budget workshops, you'll see that we'll be able to sustain all those critical services county-wide.
Mr. Chair, with the concluding remarks then, and I'll, following in what Tom has just started with right... just started with right there, just to put an additional point on that, of the $26 million hit for Placer County, $21.7 million of that, general fund in nature. So the majority of that hit would be of the general fund. And of course, that is our bread and butter. And the augmentations that come out of that fund, Public Safety Fund, this county provides $76 million general fund to the Public Safety Fund. This also, the Fire Fund receives general fund augmentation. The Library Fund receives general fund augmentation. Road Fund has already been described, general fund augmentations. It is the bread and butter fund for our county. Very important to buttress that fund, support that fund, very important when that fund gets hit. So fortunately for our county, the, this county, beginning back really in 2007, saw these problems on the horizon and has since then been taking actions through constraining costs, through the actions that your board has been providing. The guidance and the policies that your board has given us has been taking actions to constrain costs, bring expenditures in line with revenues, and has continued these efforts right up to this day, to where although we are faced with very challenging problems, we also have the policies, procedures, and a plan that we'll be bringing to your board on August 18th and 19th to address these concerns. So in summary, $26 million appears to be the size of the problem. About seventeen and a half million of that from the state challenges, about eight and a half million of that from declining revenues and realignment revenues. Bringing that, bringing some solutions, some options to your board on the 18th and 19th. And now at this point, any additional questions your board may have, we're standing by to address.
Robert?
Just another comment, Jeff, as we, and Tom and everybody, as we move into our budget workshops. First of all, I guess I'd like to thank staff. I think you've done a great job over the last several years in attempting to deal with what we saw as a changing economy, changed a lot more dramatically than I thought it would. I thought I'd never be living through an economy like this. And I guess the point of that is I'm not so sure that things will ever sort of normalize again. The economics may be different from here on out. And whereas I think we have actually done an exceptionally good job in Placer County, there are things we can't control. And the biggest one that I fear is the state. I think they have done exactly what we haven't, which is I think they have ignored the problem. And even in what I read in the paper, continue to ignore it today. I think the best case from the information I can get is that maybe they addressed their fundamental budget issues to the extent of 50 percent of the problem this year and put off half of the problem as they've been kicking that problem down the road for the last three or four or five years. So with that, we have to acknowledge that because regardless of the fact that it's their responsibility, it affects us and it looks like it's gonna continue to affect us in a pretty devastating way. And I guess we need that reality check as we go into the budget workshops and need to think of it five years down the road. I mean, I just don't see how the budget for the state is, it's not gonna fix itself. It seems to me like the legislature is just hoping that the economy is gonna turn around more than anything else. It may not turn around like it ever has in the past completely. And I guess we just need to know what impacts that's gonna specifically have on the level of county services to the citizens of Placer County as we look two and three and four years down the road.
Eric?
Well, I think to Robert's point that even if the economy does turn, I think we all need to recognize that the state was running structural budget deficits even during some pretty good economic times. So even, given their historic and current failure to address those ingredients that make up that structural budget deficit, even with a recovery in the economy, they're still going to continue to run their structural budget deficits. So, I mean, let's all keep our fingers crossed and hope things improve, but the picture at the state level will still be bleak.
At least like Sacramento County, we didn't have to lay off 130 deputies. So, you know, another problem that's on the horizon, I don't know when it's going to affect us, is the CBO office at the federal level is reporting that revenues are, income is down to the point where like the healthcare and things you're talking about. And that's gonna, I feel, have a trickle down effect because the state's not gonna get the federal dollars. It's just gonna continue until we hit a bottom someplace and then we, at the state level and federal level, they start managing their budgets like we've had to here at the local levels. You can't live beyond your means.
No.
Thank you.
Sure.
So you don't need a motion on this, is we just receive this and then Holly is gonna, we got B?
Actually, on item B, Mr. Chair, what we're hoping is if we can segue right into item B, it's the, the next item is a request in administrative direction for, as we head into the final budget, we are really asking that you affirm the policies and procedures that really have become part of the fabric of how we operate. Over the past several years, we've been taking actions that constrict how we're spending, they constrain costs, and really the continuing of reducing the expenditures that are necessary so that we can live within our means. And this is, this is guidance that was, that was brought to your board in May. We're asking that you continue this guidance to us as we bring forth the final budget. And we're asking that your board continue this guidance to us as we head into final budget workshops and into the final budget.
Do you need a motion on that or just a nod of the head or?
We're asking approval of this.
There we go. All those in favor? Aye. Well, A didn't need a motion, that was just for B only.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, real quick.
Yes.
Would you do me a favor? Can you get an electronic copy of both your, what's in our agenda packet as well as your, the requests we just adopted? I've been trying to keep the Granite Bay MAC up to date on what's been happening with the budget as we've been going through this this last four or five months. And I've got a MAC meeting tomorrow evening. So I'd love to be able to have copies of what was in our board packet available to hand out at the MAC for folks.
So send it to?
To myself and Terry, please. Terry Valdi.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. You know, if you're gonna create that in an electronic document, it might not be bad for all of us to maybe have that copy. If there's questions at our MACs, I've got a MAC the following week. I don't know that we necessarily go through it, but it'd be nice to have it. If, I mean, if you're gonna create it, it doesn't take anymore to send it to all of us, I wouldn't take.
Will do, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, we'll take item number one, the 10 o'clock time item, Sterling Point.
Good morning, Bob Costa, Public Works Department. In May of this year, your board adopted a resolution approving the formation of a permanent road division, or PRD, number eight, for the Sterling Point subdivision located in Loomis. Today's request relates to the establishment of annual charges for implementation of the services desired within the PRD. The PRD was formed at the request of the homeowners to provide a stable funding source for the maintenance of several subdivision streets that are currently maintained through the Sterling Point Homeowners Association. Funding generated through the PRD charges will be used by the county to provide specific limited maintenance to these roads as described in the PRD's engineers' report. The roads will not be part of the county's maintained mileage and no county funds will be used for their maintenance. Ballots were mailed to each of the 60 parcel owners requesting that they vote on the imposition of a charge of $211 per parcel for the first year with provision for annual indexed inflationary adjustments of up to 5 percent. The action requested today is for your board to conduct a public hearing, consider all protests, receive the election results, and if those results are favorable, consider adopting the resolution on page two of your board package, establishing the PRD charge of $211 per parcel for the first year. Your clerk has the election results and will present them following the public hearing. Unless your board members have any questions, we recommend you proceed with conducting the public hearing.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this item? Bring it back to the board, I guess, close the public hearing and then receive the tally.
Receive the election results, correct.
The ballot calculations for Sterling Point Estates Permanent Road Division Number Eight reflects the actual ballots received from the property owners of the subdivision by Placer County Department of Public Works and tabulated by the election judges appointed by Ken Graham, Director of Public Works prior to this public hearing. Of the total 60 property owners, 42 ballots were cast, 39 affirmative and three negative.
So with that then, we would recommend, since it does appear to be a strong majority of the property owners, that you approve the resolution that's included on page two of your packet.
Do you have a motion?
I have a motion.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Now we'll take item number two, Mr. Dickinson. How are you this morning?
I'm great, thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is Will Dickinson, Department of Facility Services. Today, we're asking that your board hold the scheduled public hearing to consider increasing sewer connection, annexation, and in-loo fees in seven district, seven different sewer districts. These three types of fees are all associated with new development and will not impact existing sewer and customers unless they intend to expand their service. As discussed on page nine of your packet, connection fees are paid upon application for connection to a sewer district. They provide funding for improvements needed to create additional capacity in the sewage collection and treatment system. Annexation fees are paid at the time the property is annexed, which is usually before connection if it's necessary. That is for the privilege of utilizing existing public sewer facilities that have been paid for by the existing property owners within the district. In-loe fee means the amount paid by a property owner as reimbursement for the property owner's share of the cost of construction of a previously constructed collecting sewer system. These fees are applied to a very limited portion of the new development that exists in Placer County. With the exception of the Lavoti connection fee, which was increased in 2008, Placer County has not changed any of these fees since December of 2006. As shown on the table in, on page nine, the major component of the connection fees consists of fees established by the South Placer Waste Water Authority, or the County of Sacramento in the case of the Lavoti District. If we do not pass these costs on to new customers, the existing district customers will be forced to make up the shortfall. The column labeled District Connection Fee identifies that portion of the fee which remains in the district to provide funding for new capacity. The annexation and in-loe fees also remain in the local district and have no restrictions on their use. Section 13.12.270 of the county code requires adjusting all of these fees in accordance with the construction code index produced in the engineering news record. This index increased by 8.4 percent from November of 2006 to June of 2009. Referring again to the table on page nine, for the SMD 2, SMD 3, Sunset, Whitney, and Dry Creek districts, the total connection fee is derived by adding across the rows. And I apologize for not having that column in there, but the existing connection fee for all of these districts is $7,505. The proposed fee is $7,981, and the percentage increase to the combined fee is 6.3 percent. In summary, staff recommends that your board conduct the public hearing to receive public comment, adopt the attached ordinance adjusting the fees, and then make a finding pursuant to section 21080B8 of the Public Resources Code that the higher fees are derived directly from the cost of providing service and are necessary to meet operating expenses required for the maintenance of service and are therefore exempt from our environmental review. Thank you for your consideration of this request, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions before we open up the public hearing? I will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Do we wanna?
I'm going to take 7A and B first.
We'll go to 7A and B. Maureen Baumann.
Morning.
Morning. Maureen Baumann, Director of the Adult System of Care. I have before you somewhat the results of what you heard earlier with the state budget impacts. We have nine substance abuse treatment providers. Approval for the O9-10 contracts with nine substance abuse treatment providers in an aggregate amount of $2,441,594. These substance abuse treatment contracts include a required match of $131,200 in county general funds, and these costs are included in the nine-ten budget for Health and Human Services. Just a little bit of background, Health and Human Services is designated as the local recipient of all state and federal substance abuse and treatment funds. And the department consistently collaborates with these providers we have over the years in order to put together the very best use of treatment and services in the most cost-effective way using all the state and federal dollars. And the governor's recommendation essentially for the elimination of $870,000 is reflected in these contracts. It actually results in a 33 percent reduction over last year's contracts. Health and Human Services has taken the following steps in a redesign to assure the most effective use of available substance abuse treatment funding. We've consolidated all the funding streams. We have now put in place a centralized out-client treatment and assessment center for all, for increased efficiencies for all folks seeking substance abuse treatment. It will be operated by county staff. And we've expanded use of both out-client service options and self-help alternatives. In the last fiscal year, the substance abuse treatment continuum of the providers provided services to about 1,300 persons in Placer County. It's expected, it's expected with this reduction, even with the redesign, that we'll probably serve about 300 people less in this current fiscal year. The contracts were reviewed by the Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Advisory Board at its regular meeting on June 22nd. Details of the contracts themselves are included in your packet. So I would be happy to answer any questions you might have, but would recommend approval of these contract awards.
Is that, that's item A?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone in the audience wish to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Approval of item 70.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. P?
Second item is a request and approval for our contract with Dr. Stephen Sugden. Dr. Sugden will fill a vacant position as a staff psychiatrist for the Adult System of Care due to a recent retirement. And this position will provide specialty emergency inpatient psychiatric services for 1,775 people in severe psychiatric distress. This position is gonna help with our strategy of really maintaining a decreased length of hospital stay in our inpatient unit. It's actually a strategy that has reduced our out-of-county hospital costs of what was in past years about a half a million dollars. This has allowed us also to return clients more quickly to the community and to contribute. And with this reduction, we've actually been able to sell beds to Nevada County, so we've been able to generate a little bit of revenue in our puff with this strategy. And Dr. Sugden is a seasoned practitioner, he's actually also bilingual, which we're excited about, he speaks Spanish. He will also be providing after-hours crisis response for 15 weeks, in total about 3,500 hours of clinical service to the Adult System of Care. I want to remind you that the psychiatric salaries have been frozen since 2006, wherein a salary survey was conducted in conjunction with personnel in the county executive office, and it was determined that the salaries were appropriate at that time. In addition, these positions will also be impacted by the MTO that's agreed upon by the county, just like all the other employees that are working for us. So the contract provides direct compensation of $272,000 with a compensation package not to exceed $321,622,000. So I would, at this, oh, the other thing is that we currently have a request for proposal in process to assure that this current model of inpatient and residential service provision is the most effective for is the most effective for Placer County, so we're right in the midst of that process. Personnel, county council, and CEO's office have reviewed this contract, and with that, I would be happy to answer questions and recommend approval.
Jennifer.
Maureen, thank you. I did have a couple of questions. You mentioned that this position and that, or that the salary associated with this position has been frozen since 2006. A lot of things have changed since 2006. Supervisor Euler, I think, a number of meetings ago, hey, I'm not sure which one, asked the question about, are we opening these processes up for open applications? Are we making sure that there aren't people out there who can do the same job as well or better for less money? Where are we in that?
So we are very interested in evolving that. We actually have, since two thousand and six, started employing your practitioners to extend the psychiatrist's time. So we are, we have, we've had two, we now have one extra help position. We aren't really, at this point, in a position to get to hiring positions, but we are looking at nurse practitioners as a mid-level to help extend the doctor's time. We actually have student interns that we're training now from San Francisco in that capacity, so definitely looking at those options. The RFP that I mentioned is also another vehicle to look at the entire model, to see whether perhaps another provider would actually hire the position as opposed to us hiring the position. So we're definitely looking at different models and also different positions.
Okay. I guess, maybe I wasn't totally clear. I'm just asking that if, on an individual case-by-case basis for hiring, are we opening them up to a public process and seeing if there's, you know, some range of competitiveness just given that, you know, the economy is not what it was three, four years ago? On the individual basis, not adding absolutely beneficial things like nurse practitioners which help cut costs overall, but say for this specific contract position?
I guess I'm not understanding the process you're asking me about. So we don't have, we typically haven't had, so this position, we determined we need to have a psychiatrist because of the function that it is doing. We do recruitments, I mean, because they're kind of like positions, if that's what you mean, in terms of sending out information to see who is interested in the position and reviewing those, that kind of a process.
So we are doing open recruitment and multiple interviewing and all of that?
We don't get a huge response, but we definitely, we're definitely making every effort to see what the market looks like as we're doing these positions.
Great. That's what I, that's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
Anybody in the audience wish to comment on this item? Bring it back to the board.
Approval of item seventeen.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's do C, seven C, and finish the department items.
Maureen, Chair Rockland, members of the board. I'm Cheryl Davis from your Human Services Division. Back in June, your board approved the consolidation and relocation of human services staff from three locations to one site in Rockland, and you did that as the best and most cost-effective long-term strategy for us to be able to coordinate services to the large and growing number of recipients in the South County, especially in this budget climate. Today, our action before you is a follow-up to that approval. We are recommending that you go ahead and approve that the county purchasing manager take all actions necessary to be able to set up and allow us to move into our facility so we can begin operation by the end of the year, and this project would be using previously dedicated capital project funds for our relocation. And with that, any questions? And I recommend your approval.
Anybody in the audience who want to comment on this item? Bring it back to the board.
Approval of item seven, C.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll take up now item number three, the ten-thirty timed item.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you would allow, I'll go ahead and handle this one. This particular item is in regards to adjustments with the Deputy Sheriff's Association. It has a number of resolutions and, or a resolution and introduction ordinance that was previously prepared for your board's consideration today. As your board is aware, at least I am pleased to report that we have reached a tentative agreement with the Deputy Sheriff's Association. However, that particular agreement requires an election by the membership to ratify their negotiating committee's recommendation. Staff is looking forward to having this matter resolved and appreciates the hard work that the Deputy Sheriff's Association has put into this endeavor. For that reason, I'd be recommending that we continue this item till ten-thirty on September eighth, and hopefully we'll bring forward a ratified agreement at that time. But it would be to continue this whole item till ten-thirty on September eighth, if you would so allow.
Do you need a motion on that?
That would be helpful.
Need to continue.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Well, we'll take, you want to go on to do a closed session? Take a break?
I just want to let the board, I will not be back at the eleven o'clock timed item because I have a conflict. I have property adjacent to the item question.
All right, we will now go into closed session. Board will adjourn to closed session to discuss the litigation items listed on eight A of the agenda.
Jeremy, go ahead and hit Show under Projection Page, please. Thank you.
The Board has returned from closed session where they took up items 8A Forest Hill Residence for Responsible Growth versus County of Placer. They heard a report from Council and gave direction. And 8AD Sutter County versus County of Placer, again, they heard a report from Council and gave direction. The other items will be heard at a later time today.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, we're going to take up item number four, the community appeal of the American Tire. And it's not going to be a public hearing. The public hearing process has been closed. But in conversations with Council representing American Tire, Marcus Laduka is going to take about five minutes to represent that side. I will allow Mr. La Piccolo five minutes, and then that's after the staff report, and then the Board will go into deliberations. So, go ahead, and we'll start with the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Paul Thompson with the Planning Department filling in for Michael Johnson in his absence. This item was continued from the June 23, 2009 Board hearing. At that hearing, the Board directed staff to work with the applicant to see if the Americas Tire project could be modified to incorporate design standards equal to the Les Schwab Tire Center expansion. Jerry Haas with Planning Department is here to present the staff's findings based on your direction.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Thank you, Chairman, Honorable Board. As Paul mentioned, after deliberation, your Board took action to continue this hearing to determine whether or not the Americas Tire project can incorporate the identical design criteria established for the previously approved Les Schwab expansion. Specifically, the applicant was tasked with revising the site plan to include 20 feet of landscaping along the Willow Creek frontage... Excuse me. Including 20 feet of landscaping at the Willow Creek frontage and 10 feet of landscaping at the south property line, the common property line between these two projects. A third design issue relates to the maximum allowed warehouse use for each project. Mr. La Piccolo has asserted that his project was restricted to a maximum of 25% of the total floor area to be used for warehouse or storage for his project, while the Americas Tire project proposes 44% of their site to be used as warehouse. This is an image of the revised site plan. As you can see, the plan includes 20 feet of landscaping along the Willow Creek frontage, where the applicant had previously proposed 12 feet of landscaping. The site plan also includes 10 feet of landscaping along the south property line. In your packets, Exhibit 8 is a letter defining from the applicant that defines the hardships that would be experienced by the applicant if these landscape revisions were to become requirements for the project. As stated by the applicant in Exhibit 8, the landscaping revisions would render the project infeasible, and the applicant would be forced to look for a different site. This is the proposed floor plan for Americas Tire that Mr. La Piccolo specifically objects to. Mr. La Piccolo is correct in his assertion that the Americas Tire project proposes more than 25% of the structure to be used for warehouse or tire storage. However, Mr. La Piccolo is incorrect in his assertion that his project was restricted to no more than 25% of the site to be used as warehouse. As discussed in the staff report, the Les Schwab building permit documents a 7,700-square-foot warehouse structure, which includes a 3,000-square-foot second-floor mezzanine identical to the type that is proposed for the Americas Tire project. Therefore, the Les Schwab project is currently utilizing 50% of the site as warehouse use, while the Americas Tire project proposes only 44% of their site as warehouse use. This is a current view of the Les Schwab expansion. The warehouse structure was permitted without environmental review, without a use permit modification, and has been relieved of most of the design criteria required for all new projects, all new commercial projects in the North Auburn area, aside from the landscaping requirements. Staff can elaborate on the reductions later if it is the desire of the Board. This is the Americas Tire project, a structure that will proportionally cost more to construct. It is designed to not look like a warehouse. It provides substantially more onsite landscaping and utilizes building materials that demonstrate the excellence in site planning that is the intent of the Commercial Plan Development Zone District. Staff rejects the notion that Mr. La Piccolo is treated unfairly. Rather, the flexibility that Planning Department staff is entrusted with by board-approved policy was applied in each of these cases in a manner that allows each project to be developed while ensuring that both projects are designed in accordance with the North Auburn Design Guidelines and are consistent with the development vision set forth in the Auburn Bowman Community Plan. Because the recommended modifications of the Americas Tire Company project would render the project infeasible, staff recommends that your Board deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's approval of this project, and this will be subject to the findings and conditions of approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Robert?
Could you elaborate a little bit more on the relaxation or whatever words you chose to describe Les Schwab?
Sure. Mr. La Piccolo was allowed to use a prefabricated metal structure. You typically don't see those in the North Auburn area. This was in place of a more conventional mixture of building materials, stucco, wood, brick veneer, varied building or roof forms, articulation. He was also allowed to forego the brick wainscoting that goes along the bottom of the building, because it would have been too costly to do. He was also allowed to eliminate several vining trellises that would have shown up along the building face here and along this face here, because if they had constructed those building trellis or those vining trellises, it would have avoided the building's warranty from the manufacturer.
So, essentially, he made an appeal to have those design review guidelines looked at more liberally, and staff recommended that?
This was following approval of the Design Review Agreement. These were modifications that came in after the Design Review Agreement was approved that staff agreed to.
The decision definitely made at the staff level in design review.
Yes, it did.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Jennifer?
I did have a question, a couple of questions, Jerry. On page 47 of our package, it says the proposed reduction would equate to an approximately 50% reduction in building area from that... 50% reduction in building area from that originally proposed by the applicant. I may have missed it in my reading, but what was the original square footage, and what is the proposed revised square footage?
Thank you for catching that. That's something that Mr. Thompson and I caught first thing this morning. It actually was supposed to read as a 50% reduction in the number of service bays. Originally, the project, and I think all America's Tire Company facilities have eight service bays that they're typically outfitted with. The original plan, in order to shift it so the service bay faced away from the public right-of-way, reduced that to five. The board recommended revisions would reduce it to four, so it was half the number that they would normally be allowed.
So it's not half the overall square footage of the original project to propose. Okay, great, because I thought, wow, you know, my math's not that great, but I'm just not sure. Then my second question is, and again, I may just be missing it. What was the North Auburn MAC's position on this, or did they take one?
The North Auburn MAC recommended that the identical design criteria be applied to both projects. They really didn't have the benefit of looking at both projects side by side. They only heard what this project was proposing generally and more or less vaguely, and then heard testimony from the appellant. So their determination was that they should both be applied identically.
Right, thank you. No more clarifying questions, Mr. Chairman.
Kirk.
Would you show the elevation picture of the project as proposed?
Is that the one?
Yes. That looks like three equal service bay doors. Is that not six service bays?
That's the original proposed project.
Oh, okay.
So the new one with, this last one here would be cut in half.
Okay, thank you. I just thought I saw six when you flashed past that and you just mentioned five. Thank you.
I did want to mention that Supervisor Holmes recused himself. That's why he's not sitting here with us. He didn't take a long break or anything, because he owns property in the area. All right, I will allow the appellant now five minutes, and then I will allow five minutes for, I believe that's what you said, Marcus, you can cover it in about five minutes. And please address all your comments up here, please.
Thank you, Supervisors and Chairman, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. In regards to the Planning Department's response to the issues of the 25% warehouse-to-retail percentage, I quote in their response, "Mr. Lopiccolo states that he was not allowed to utilize any more than 25% of his total floor area for storage. Staff's review of the building permit has revealed that this is not the case. I find this response extremely frustrating. The 25% issue is not in regards to the existing building, but is in regards to the Les Schwab expansion project that was proposed on a separate parcel adjoining to my existing project. After a MAC hearing, a Planning Commission hearing, and last month's board meeting, and given a month to formulate a response, I would expect the Planning Department would be directing their presentation today to the appropriate project. If you review the Planning Commission hearing minutes, the staff's response to inconsistent allowable warehouse space, it states their acknowledgement of my proposal and an expansion on an adjacent parcel. In the minutes, quotes comments from the ERC regarding their requirement of the 25%. I quote, 'Please note that warehousing is not a permissible use in the CPD Zone District. The county has permitted, in some cases, to a retail business up to 25% of gross floor area as warehousing as an accessory use.' That's a quote. Also noted that their proposal did not meet the intent of the CPD Zone District, and that we withdrew our EQ application and reapplied for a remodel of the existing building, which would now become exempt from the ERC Environmental Review and the 25% warehousing requirement. Is that clear? Thank you. This attempt by the Planning Department to explain why America's Tire is not held to the same 25% requirement will be its fourth different response. I also need to point out that the Planning Department's comments regarding my percentage of storage to the relationship of America's Tire percentage of storage appears to be using the identical math used by CEI Engineering, whom is retained by America's Tire. I fear that Mr. Haas has taken these calculations to be accurate, as he has in his showing here, when in fact, the math calculated by CEI is either fuzzy or a gross miscalculation. First, we have apparently chosen to disregard Plaster County Code, Chapter 17 zoning definitions. This article clearly defines warehousing, accessory use, and storage. CEI is attempting to separate out one form of storage, new tires, not including anything else. Secondly, I've brought a blueprint here that I encourage any of the supervisors that, if they want to look at, supplied by America's Tire's own architects, showing in detail the total floor area denoted for storage. This was submitted to the Planning Department by the applicant before they were aware of the 25% issue. This floor plan clearly shows the total storage area is upwards of 70%. Landscaping and setbacks. I've supplied documentation showing that these two standards have been required on the original expansion project dating back to 2004, and that my current design site review agreement written by Michael Johnson, the Planning Department, has stated that their standards were and are not quoted wrong. And even though the board has requested the Planning Department task the applicant to develop an alternative site plan applying these standards, and the applicant has produced that site plan that shows those standards are definitely obtainable, see Exhibit 7, the Planning Department is still in opposition. Apparently, implementing consistent standards that are defined in our county ordinances and applying them to identical businesses is not important. But what is important, as denoted in their response, which is, I believe, the reasoning for the Planning Department's inconsistency here, is important that the strain of an America's Tire manager would be under while trying to service his customers or dealing with a tired delivery during peak hours, and how these things will affect store profits. Since when does a Planning Department in the condition and the conditional use process evaluate the internal operations of any business?
Can you wrap it up in?
Two seconds. When I first discussed my concerns with the planning, specifically Mr. Haas, made it clear to me that the position was not the, that their position was not with the economics of a business, but was to process an applicant and make sure that the county requirements were upheld. During the Planning Commission hearing, three board members made a point to remind me that the hearing body could not consider business operations, potential competition, or any economics impacted by any business that would sustain through development of another.
I'm going to have to cut you off, because I'm going to keep this to five, try to keep five minutes. I've given you extra time. Can you just, in one paragraph, sum it up, please?
Let's all please remember that I'm not asking the board to deny America's Tire's conditional use permit, but only to require a consistent, fair, and balanced approach, and allow businesses to operate under similar conditions and decide if their business plan can adapt and abide to our county's requirements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Marcus Laduka, 3721 Douglas Boulevard in Roseville. On behalf of America's Tire Company, I'm pleased to be before you with the strong and continued recommendation of your staff to deny the appeal and uphold the nearly unanimous Planning Commission approval of the project. Since your June 23 hearing, your staff and my client have done exactly what you asked us to do, and that is to try to come before you answering the questions you had at that hearing. We now have staff's strong direction based on those answers, and I just want to review a couple of those very briefly. On the mezzanine level, again, we need to be clear, the mezzanine's a racking system with a catwalk. Neither the catwalk nor the upper mezzanine of the racking system is used for storage. It's used for employees to not be, have to go on tall ladders or climb the racks themselves to access the tires. In the interest of that apples-to-apples comparison you had talked about, again, as staff showed, in terms of the calculations, anyone can do the math. The math is before you, based on the 50% versus the roughly 42%, 43% between America's Tire and Les Schwab. So in terms of apples-to-apples, I think we're actually on the lower end of that compared to the appellant's project. Landscaping and setbacks, again, as the staff report mentioned, when we came forward with us in response to additional comments from staff relative to turning bays away from the public right-of-way, we reduced the project by 40% in terms of the number of bays. Display and storage areas were also reduced. As the letter to you in your packet from my client stated, any further reduction based on the landscaping and building setbacks that were mentioned by the appellant would reduce storage space, another service bay, and showroom space. Based on these reductions, if that's the board's direction, my client will not proceed forward with this project. A couple other facts I think are important relative to the board's consideration. The landscape and building setbacks that we proposed were identical to what the county approved in 2005 for the Autozone project, yet our neighbor did not have any objections at that time. When the initial review, again, by staff of our project relative to its building orientation came forward, we came forward, reduced the number of bays, reduced storage space, reduced showroom space, but we also came forward with a project that met or exceeded all county standards. To give you an example, on the Highway 49 landscape plan requirement of 30 feet on Highway 49, we exceed that from anywhere from 25% to 167% in terms of what the requirements are. Conversely, when the appellant originally submitted his project, again, a standalone warehouse project, that project is prohibited in the Zone District. The existing project there, the existing Les Schwab project built, again, decades earlier, didn't meet any current landscaping requirements, but even with the enhanced landscaping that that expansion was subject to, the overall landscaping on that site versus our site, they're not only comparable, but we believe we have even greater landscaping on an overall basis than the Les Schwab project with its expansion. At your last hearing, there was also a good deal about discussion about trying to make, again, these two different applicants equal or comparable. The circumstances of those two projects, though, are very, very different. You have an older project with an expansion area, a significant expansion, versus a brand-new project, a single project that meets or exceeds all county requirements. Again, in the area of landscaping, we far exceed county requirements. At the June 3 hearing, you heard also that the appellant had to redesign his projects three times at significant cost. That initial submittal, again, was in violation and prohibited by the CPD Zone, so that's not on the county's dime in terms of having to redesign. If the appellant did not like also what came out of the staff project, he could have appealed, and he did not. We'd also note he did not have to conduct environmental review, comply with sequel mitigation measures, or have any public hearings. My client, on the other hand, satisfied sequel with a mitigated NAGDEC at a significant cost, including all the special studies. The overall cost of that environmental review was approximately $70,000. We have 25 mitigation measures that we have to comply with, and we've now had three public hearings. We believe we've met or exceeded all county requirements. We wanted to come forward with a project that was consistent or exceeded those county requirements, and to do so, again, in a very terrible economic climate that we have, but we're dedicated to proceeding forward. Should you deny the appeal, join your staff and join the Planning Commission to deny the appeal and allow our project to come forward here in North Auburn. We'd be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thanks. I'll bring it back to the board for discussion, questions. Robert.
Couple of questions, I guess. Want to be clear now, trying to connect mentally to the prior hearing that we had. The Auburn Bowman Community Plan guidelines, apparently, I don't memorize those either, but they state that you can have warehousing projects per se are prohibited. Standalone warehousing structures are prohibited, correct?
It's prohibited in the zoning ordinance in the Commercial Plan Development Zone District.
That was challenged with the first submittal with Les Schwab.
That's correct. The original submittal proposed sort of an industrial complex. It was three 10,000-square-foot structures that were all warehouse.
So subsequent proposal was to marry that to an expansion whereby the...
Yeah, it scaled back and back and back.
So then the standard in the community plan, the 25% of the floor space within a facility can be warehoused, is that...
Again, it doesn't show up in any county policy or ordinance. It's a determination made by a previous planning director.
So just more of subjective amount of floor space can be merged with a more retail type of facility consistent with the general guidelines and design review guidelines.
I think generally, that's correct. What it was getting at was that the warehouse use should be subordinate or accessory to the primary use of the site.
So in both cases, the floor warehouse space percentage-wise is about the same, and if you add the mezzanine, it's also about the same.
That's correct.
Percentage-wise. Okay, thanks. It's not my question.
Anybody else? Jennifer.
Thank you both for your presentations today, and thank you as well. I went back and reviewed my notes from the previous meeting where we discussed this, and looked over everything that was presented to us today, and I think many of my concerns were addressed. Some still do remain. I would say that my biggest concern about this, and it's not crucial, is really just the characterization in some of the documents here that Mr. Lopiccolo is complaining about the standards that were applied to him in the past, when that is very clearly not what he's complaining about. He's saying that he accepts the standards that were applied to him. He just feels they should be applied to the current applicant. And I just think, you know, I just want to make that very clear, and we have characterized that very differently, and I'm uncomfortable with that. Having said that, having spent more time reviewing this, it does appear that this project, the America's Tire project, does meet or exceed county requirements. Because those requirements offer some latitude, they are flexible. What was applied in one situation does not necessarily need to be applied across the board or equally, to use possibly a freighted term. I think Mr. Lopiccolo also raised a good question about, you know, the America's Tire applicant has submitted, I guess it's Exhibit 8, saying that if they have to make these changes, it's not going to be economically feasible. Just as it's not our responsibility as a board to look into the economics of projects, because that's not our choice, it's also not our responsibility to make sure that projects will work and that developers will turn a profit. Be that as it may, that's a larger policy question, and again, I don't want to talk about that on an individual project basis. So my intention today is to deny the appeal. I think there were some very interesting issues raised that we should continue to think about on a larger scale, but not on the individual project scale. Thank you both.
Kirk.
Yeah, I, in our last meeting, expressed my, I don't know if remorse is the right word, or what Mr. Lopiccolo went through in his project. I also expressed my reluctance that one person, having endured a bad experience in moving through our process, should not necessarily result in someone else having to navigate the same troubled waters. And that's kind of firmly where I find myself today. So with that, I would move that we deny the appeal, uphold the Planning Commission's approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the findings contained in our staff report on page 71, and then rolling over to 72.
I'll second that, and just liberty to take a couple of comments, I guess. In my view, I think it's important to remember that some of the standards are explicit, even numerical, some are very subjective. I actually feel that the standards were applied fairly consistently to both projects. The one issue that does trouble me is the setback requirement as it relates to the Les Schwab project, but I think in total, overall, the landscaping are comparable, but maybe even greater at American Tire. Les Schwab had some relaxation of the interpretation and delivery of the design review guidelines, I believe, in terms of a portion of their expansion at least. So overall, I'm very comfortable that there is... So, overall, I'm very comfortable that there is essentially parity as it relates to the delivery of the standards, and as a result of that, supportive of the motion.
Before I call for the vote, I just had one comment. One of the things that came up in this discussion was for Mr. Lopiccolo's, where he gets his deliveries, there's a problem there with landscaping, that the curbing or something keeps broken up because the trucks have a little more trouble getting out of there because of the requirement. Was that, did you, were you able to look at that and make any concession there for him?
We didn't revisit that. It's been constructed. It's in place right now, and I suppose if you wanted to come back in and modify the design review agreement, we may consider that.
All right. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Aye opposed? Thank you, and thank everybody for their presentations and working with us. And that concludes our meeting today, and now we will.
The Board is going to read during the closed session to discuss the litigation items at number eight, one, B and C, and item 2A of the closed session agenda on page three.
All right.